This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Good evening. Welcome to the Sampson City Council meeting Wednesday, October 19. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast by Sampson Media and Charter, Channel 193, and live streaming on their YouTube channel. All councils and participants in these meetings are gathering hybrid on the executive order by Governor Baker extended to March 2023, which allowed us to do so. I remind both, the members of the city council and the public, to remain mute until recognized by the city council president. Also, for the member of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in public speak time of the public hearing. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Barbara?
Connie Denham, here. Salem Derby, Omar Gomez, JP Kozinski.
Aye.
David Muir, Tom Peak.
Here.
Brad Riley, Dan Rist.
Here.
Owen Zera.
Present.
Please turn now for the pleasure of the venue. I will take a motion to approve the minutes of October 6, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of October 6, 2022. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Barbara?
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Sten.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zera.
Aye.
Motion passes. You got it?
Yep.
Public speak time. Is anyone here for the public that want to address anything to the council that is not part of the public hearing? This is the time to talk. I will ask you to be respectful, to just talk to the council, and you have three minutes to talk to the council. This is not the public hearing. This is public speak time. So if there's anything that you want to say, can you please go to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
John Mason, Parks and Recreation. Just want to get the word out. Next Wednesday is the Rag Shag Parade. After a few years hiatus, we're bringing it back with a new route. It will be ending at the East Hampton High School this year. We weren't sure about the construction on Union Street, so we were planning on being safe than sorry on that. So it'll still start from Maple Street School at 6:30. It'll end at the high school parking lot, and we'll be handing out candy. So please dress up and enjoy a tradition that's been going on for 45-plus years minus the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for information, where is that going to start?
Maple School.
Maple School. All right. Anyone else from the public here? And I know Stan, I saw you, but I'm going first with the public here. Anyone else? No. Stan?
I'm here as a member of the Board of the COA in support of the request by them to realign salaries and staffing at the COA. I attended the committee meeting that discussed that, and it seemed there was good approval, but I want to support it here as well.
Thank you, Stan. And by the way, that is going to be at the public hearing. If you want to talk about that later, you are allowed to do so. Anyone else? I don't see anyone else. Communication for the elected officials boards and committee? Any councilor have anything to say tonight? Seeing none. The mayor's communication, she's not here. She don't have anything. Correspondence or announcement for the president or vice president? We don't have anything. Yeah, I told you.
Oh, geez, I'm so sorry.
We announced that early voting starts on Saturday.
You want to do it?
Sure.
We have an announcement for the president, but I'm going to allow our club to make the announcement.
Sure. Just want to announce that in-person early voting will start this Saturday, right in this room. It goes right through Friday, November 4, and the schedule is on our website, easthamptonma.gov.
Thank you. Report of standing committees. Finance, Consul Rist.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a report in your packet, councilors. We have a report on the increases in the salary and/or stipends of the school committee and city council for the next term. That's for the future city council and school committee. They include a raise of 50% for the council and 100% for the school committee, primarily because of the amount of hard work the school committee does and the extensive work now that the city council is doing. The idea the council decided, I mean, the finance committee brought these forward to help improve through increases in salary the diversity of the council and the possibility of persons of lower income to join the council because they may not be able to afford it. But if we have a salary that's in keeping with that, they may be able to do so. In any case, we also asked that, we will be setting a public hearing. I'll make that motion for, is it November 2?
November 2, yep.
And we'll try to get some public input at that meeting. And at that meeting, I will ask that we continue it to the next council meeting where the city council will debate the two salary increases and vote on the second public hearing. That gives the public sufficient time to give us feedback. These are fairly large increases. So at this time, I'd like to move that we set a public hearing for the salary increases for the school committee and the city council for November 2 at 6:15 in each chamber.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to schedule a public hearing. About the charter, we require review of elected official boards and committee stipends for November 2 at 6:15 in the chamber. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Barbara?
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zera.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And the finance committee has nothing on their agenda as of yet for the next meeting, so there will not be a finance committee meeting on November, I'm sorry, on October 26 as scheduled. So that is canceled. That concludes, Mr. President.
Thank you. Public safety, Consul Sarat.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met just last week, last Tuesday. There was no report from the police department. We briefly discussed, we had a presentation from the assistant planner, Jamie Webb, about the New City Quick Actions. Pretty much, we're able to review all of those. I have sent an email to the DPW director and the police chief about our conclusions on that. I can summarize that further in an email to the council. We did identify the need to amend our ordinances to reflect the addition of two stop signs as requested. That's in the packet. And that's really the only significant council action that needs to be taken at this time. Sorry, I'm kind of bouncing around a little bit here. So at this point, I'd like to set a public hearing for our next meeting. I believe that's November 2 at 6:15 to amend the city ordinance to reflect the addition of those two stop signs. That's in the form of a motion.
We need a second. We have a motion and a second to set a public hearing for the November 2 at 6:15 in the chamber. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Barbara?
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zera.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
We began some of our deliberations picking up where the previous committee had left off on the ordinance review committee's final report. We'll continue to do so over the next few meetings. There's still not yet a traffic count available regarding the South Main Traffic Light. But we will be meeting November 1 at 6:00 p.m. I believe that will likely be a hybrid meeting. I'm still trying to determine that. One of our members will probably not be available in person. And we'll have the DPW director there for his report. We'll be able to discuss that. We've narrowed down a list of a first-phase recommendation for electric speed monitoring signs, and that would also potentially include one sign on Parsons Street as part of the New City Quick Actions as well. I've spoken to the DPW director about that. He's putting together a proposal for a request for that along with some other items that the DPW will probably be coming forward as well. And it looks like all of our items are up to date, so this concludes.
Thank you, Consul. Appointments? Would I have anything in appointment or report? Or then, Consul Peak?
Thank you, Mr. President. All right, so I'm filling in for Consul Derby, who we all wish speedy recovery. We're still, the ordinance review committee's final report, we're still working through just, we know what we want to do. The question is, how do we economically advertise a large number of mostly very minor changes without it just taking up a huge amount of space and being very expensive to advertise? So that's a conversation that I know, Barb, you've been looking into, and we're probably going to have to discuss that soon, but we have not discussed it in a little bit. Vacant storefront ordinance, we're still working on. Right there, sort of the issue is just figuring out how best to actually enforce it. Who's responsible for collecting this information? Who's responsible for communicating with building owners, that sort of thing? I think broadly what we want to do is solidified. It's just a matter of, like, what city personnel actually has these tasks. So we did receive in our packet a letter from Consul Zerret about his proposed ordinance amending Chapter 6. So, Consul Zerret, would you like to speak to that? Or is that all right, President Gomez?
Yeah, sure. I mean, there's a letter in the packet. I think it pretty well summarizes the conversations we've had so far and addresses some of the concerns that have arisen around the conversation about proposed ordinance 6-23. Through conversations with city council leadership, whether this could be something that could be amended in committee versus the bulk of the language that might be recommended going forward? What was the best way to handle that? It was recommended by the chair and the president to remove the current language without prejudice and then be able to introduce new language without having to make large-scale amendments. And the letters available for review, which I think addresses not only the conversations to date, but some of the concerns about certain institutions within the city. And so if there's any questions, I can answer them. But otherwise, I think it was pretty clear.
Any Consul have any question about this? Take your motion.
Well, in that case, at your request, Consul Zerret, I will make a motion to remove the proposal to amend Chapter 6, adding Section 6-23 deceptive advertising practices of limited pregnancy centers without prejudice.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to remove the amend Chapter 6, adding Section 623 deceptive advertising practice of limited pregnancy center to remove it without prejudice. We have, any further discussion? Seeing none. Barbara?
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zera.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, and in terms of the request to amend city ordinances, Chapter 6, Section 2-61, Storage of Unregistered Vehicles, we are going to have a public hearing on that at our next city council meeting? Yes, our next city council meeting. And finally, so here's one. This is slightly awkward because I am the sole ordinance committee member here tonight, but I was sick when we had this meeting, but I've got a pretty good idea of how it went down. So the ordinance committee did meet last week, or yeah, or maybe two weeks ago. Anyway, they met, yeah, two weeks ago. They met to discuss a proposed amendment to city ordinance, to Chapter 7, Section 7-17A, to add a COA program manager at grade D.
We're going to cover that once we open the public hearing.
And that's going to be covered during the public hearing. So you don't need to worry about it.
And it's 6:15.
And it's 6:15.
That will conclude the report.
So this concludes, and I'll talk to you in a second.
Thank you.
I move that we open the public hearings.
Take care. All right, we have a motion and a second to open a public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Barbara?
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zera.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Motion passes. Public hearings open. I will start with the utility pool location. Consul Kozinski?
EverSource had requested the installation of four midspan poles on Mineral Street. And the property committee met to discuss this, voted 3 to 0 to recommend approval of the installation of the poles. The poles run from the house number 21 through to the Southampton Line. That's pole number 116/11 through the Southampton Line.
Any Consul have any questions or concerns? Anyone from the public have any questions or comment about these pole locations?
About what?
Pole locations. Seeing none. Consul Kozinski?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the EverSource request for permission to install four midspan poles with anchors along Mineral Street for system reliability upgrades. The petitioners agree to reserve space for one crossarm at a suitable point on each of said poles for the fire and police signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the utility pole locations. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Barbara?
Owen Zera.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
And Dan Rist.
Aye.
Motion passes. Before Consul Rist, can you, I'm going to ask something for the public. We need you to be quiet, please. We need you to be silent so that we can have the meeting. So just be quiet, please. Thank you. Consul Rist?
Yes, we have an underpart transfer in front of us. This is an old bill, $281, which was submitted because of an auto insurance unexpected expense or expense when an auto insurance audit showed that we owed them money. This happens all the time when we close out the prior fiscal year and we pay it out of this year's funds. It's pretty straightforward, although our human rights, human rights.
Resource.
Are you the human rights director? The human resource director is here if you have any questions, but it's simply an auto insurance issue. I don't know, Emily, if you really want to say anything, but thank you for coming anyway. Anybody?
Any Consul have any questions? Anyone from the public have any questions or comments about this appropriation? Seeing none. Consul Rist?
I move that the full council approve an interdepartmental transfer. The amount requested is $281 to be transferred from the reserve fund, to be transferred to insurance prior fiscal year bills, $281, for the purpose of covering unexpected insurance expenses for auto insurance for fiscal year 2022 due to a prior-year audit. USI Insurance Audit found outstanding remaining premium costs.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a transfer of $281 auto insurance old bill, outstanding premium cost fund in an audit. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Barbara?
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zera.
Aye.
Motion passes. Consul Rist?
The next one is a supplemental appropriation request from the Community Preservation Act, which was approved by the CPA by unanimous vote. This is a bill for $65,202 to complete the construction of Mount Tom North's unexpected expenses. A lot of them have to do with supply, et cetera. I'm going to turn it over to our planner, Jeff Bag, to update the council on the reason that we need this extra money.
Turn it back.
Thank you. Yeah, Consul Rist described it as a bill. We're not quite there yet. We were anticipating a few additional costs for the end of the project. We encountered two things through the course of the project. One was a supply chain issue, and the other was, you know, we were building a trail on the side of a mountain, and so we are looking to add an additional drainage feature into the site for the long-term kind of durability of the project. And those two things came at the end of the project, and so we're seeking these additional funds. And the other built-in component is a nominal amount for the Parks and Rec Department to have available as we transition the maintenance responsibilities to the parks to have access to those funds in case there's any unforeseen circumstances over the next sort of six months to a year.
Any Consul have any questions or comment? Anyone from the public have any questions or comment about the supplemental appropriation from the CPA funds? About that?
Is there going to be any more discussion on the other topic at all publicly tonight?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Have a good night.
Seeing none. Consul Rist?
I move that the full council approve a supplemental appropriation request from the Community Preservation Act. The amount requested is $65,202. To be appropriated from the CPA Reserve for Open Space, $59,914. To be appropriated, I'm sorry, and also from the CPA Undesignated Fund, $5,288, for a total of $65,202. To be appropriated to the Mount Tom Trailhead Park Additional Funds Account, $65,202, for the purpose of providing additional funding for unanticipated construction costs related to the construction of the Mount Tom North Trailhead Park.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation from CPA funds of $65,202. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zera.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Motion passes. Consul Rist?
The last one is a $190,000 appropriation from the Community Preservation Act to support the pool reconstruction. This is also matching a park grant of $400,000 in the budget as well as over $600,000 from the city itself. This pool, this is, totals about $12,203,500. You've all seen the budget in the prior packet. It will do a great deal to improve the conditions at the pool. I would like to, Mr. President, with your permission, ask Park Director John Mason to come to the podium to answer any questions and update the council on the construction costs.
Mr. Mason?
Thank you very much. Yes, as Dan mentioned, we did receive the $400,000 for the park grant. We are also going to be actively pursuing additional grant funding for this, which historically has been released around November 1, and that's the Land Water Conservation Fund, and that would be a 50% match. So that would be, we're anticipating between 310 and 325 or so for that grant that we'd write it for. It needs to be submitted by January with a notification by springtime. The grant for the park portion is $60,000 for this year, and that's through June 30 for design. So up and through June 30, we have $60,000 to get a design in place, construction documents, and then we cannot spend anything towards construction until after July 1. We are moving full steam ahead. I actually had an hour and a half webinar with a company, Pool Company, National One, to discuss some of the stuff that they provide for rehabbing pools. So we are moving as we're, we're moving forward as we're going through this process. We're not just, you know, I mean, I'm hoping you guys approve the money, but, you know, we are still moving forward as we go, so we're ready when July 1 comes along. Our anticipation is to be looking at construction, getting mobilization mid-August and construction by mid-September. And then, one of the things that was discussed at the webinar today was a lot of this work, they do a lot of work in the New England area, and it can be done in cold weather climates, so it wouldn't be where we had to shut it down if we had to keep getting days like today and keep moving forward. So that's the plans moving forward, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any Consul have any question? Consul Rist?
Just to be clear to the council and the public, the pool will be open this summer. This doesn't delay the pool from, this doesn't prevent the pool from being open this summer. It simply will make improvements for the following.
Yes, yeah. So we're planning on having the pool open this summer. We have some plans in place. We actually had a lifeguard email the other day looking for a job, and we said, absolutely, we'll keep your name and number on file, and, you know, we'll be reaching out to you in January. I also have a meeting with another community stakeholder who's interested in helping us along with getting lifeguards. So I have that meeting in two weeks. So we are jumping on this real, real early to get lifeguards. And yes, we want to get one last splash in the old pool this summer and then be gone with it and get something a little more modern for the residents and non-residents that visit our park.
Any other Consul have any question? Seeing none. Anyone from the public want to have a question or comment about this appropriation? Seeing none. Consul Rist?
Yes, one last thing. You'll see in your packet, I have a new motion at the end of the meeting on the new business. We are required to actually appropriate the entire amount of the construction cost for the pool. It's a formality so that the Parks Grant people know that we're going to actually do the work. So I just want you all to know that. And this was approved 3 to 0 by the Finance Committee. Mr. President, I move the supplemental appropriation request be approved by the full council from the Community Preservation Act. The amount requested is $190,000 to be appropriated from the CPA Reserve for Open Space, $55,076, and the CPA Reserve Fund, $134,924, for a total of $190,000. To be appropriated to the Non-Italk Park Pool Restoration Construction Account, $190,000. For the purpose of the final design and construction funds for the rehabilitation and restoration of the pool and surrounding recreation areas, specific improvements include replacement of the pool equipment, pool membrane, pool deck, adding shade structures, installation of fencing, and American Disability Act improvements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation from the CPA funds of $190,000 for Non-Italk Park Pool improvements. Any further discussion? Consul Kozinski?
I just wanted to say and acknowledge all the hard work that everyone's put in to date on this project. It isn't every community that has the opportunity to have a swimming pool. I think we're blessed here in East Hampton. I am grateful, and I am looking forward to having all, having folks have all the fun and for there to be educational classes in swimming. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Consul Rist?
I forgot to mention that this is an example of what our Community Preservation Act does for the city, improving the quality of life, especially for our residents who do not have pools in their backyards to be able to use a pool and to modernize it so it'll last for many, many years to come. That's what our Community Preservation Act funds do for our city.
Any other Consul? Seeing none. Barbara?
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zera.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Consul Rist? Consul Peak?
Anyway, as I was saying, thank you, Mr. President. Yes, so ordinance amm- Yes, so ordinance meant two weeks back to discuss the addition of a new position and amending our city ordinance, Chapter 7, Section 17, or 7-17A, to add this position, a Council on Aging Program Manager at grade D. I was not at that meeting, but I understood that they did vote favorably 2 to 0 to approve that, and I believe that there are some folks from the city here to speak.
Cindy, yeah?
Yeah, yeah. So, with your permission, I will.
Cindy?
Hi, everybody. Let me just turn my camera on. Okay. Thank you so much to the ordinance committee for hearing my long explanation, and I'll just try to keep this brief, and then you can ask me any questions. Is that how you want to do it?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, the position of Activity Coordinator was meant to be a position that would assist the director in coming up with and continuing activities that are not social services necessarily or transportation, but are all the social, cultural, recreational, and other types of activities that a typical senior center would offer. Since taking the position, Dawn Gration Moore has actually not acted as an assistant in creating this programming, but has really taken the project, expanded it, and acted in collaboration with the director and the other staff, but taken the lead on it, so that when I took this position as director a year ago, I had no idea, having not seen the job description, that she was supposed to be assisting me in doing it. And everything seemed like it was going along fairly well, except that I realized she only had 20 hours in which to do this job, and the grade of grade B did not match what she was doing. So, after investigating what the job was supposed to be, what it actually was, and then looking at other centers in other towns, I could see that there is either like an activity assistant, or there's a program manager or assistant director of a senior center. And the work that Dawn was actually doing was much closer to what a program manager would do. Then I thought about, well, what do we need in East Hampton for the seniors who use the center? What we need are activities that are planned with careful evaluation and strategic planning, and this position doesn't allow for that, and that is all left to the director. But the director, especially with COVID, and really all the staff, their jobs have grown because the seniors we serve, their needs have grown, and we're trying to serve them holistically with so many, in so many different areas of their lives, and their basic needs have also increased at the same time. So, the way I look at this is, if we remove the position of Activity Coordinator, and we have a program manager who also will be given additional hours, then because the city has already created the position of Principal Clerk, we can split off those grade B tasks from the activity, old Activity Coordinator. We're giving them to this full-time Principal Clerk at 35 hours. Now, we can take those remaining jobs, tasks that the Activity Coordinator was doing that are at a much higher level, that really are grade D work, and also enhance those with the other parts I'm talking about, being strategic, really evaluating what we're doing, creating more programming that serves a wide range of people and meets today's needs. So, if anybody has any questions, I can address those. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Any councilor have any question?
Sounds great.
No? Anyone from the public have any comments or questions about this? Yeah, I know that. Stan? You're muted. Just wait. Stan, you're muted.
You have to unmute.
Let's see if I can do it here.
Sorry about that.
There you go.
As I said earlier, I'm here primarily for this public hearing and want to register as a citizen and as a member of the Board of the COA, my full support for this. The COA is in desperate need of growing its support for the community, and this is an excellent way of growing that support and making us more able to serve the needs of our senior citizens in East Hampton.
Thank you, Stan. Anyone else? Louise?
Thank you. I haven't found the button yet. Okay, I'd just like to.
Can you please state your name and address just for the record, please?
Sorry, Louise Jacob, resident. I'm, okay, yeah. Really, that I'd just like to support what Cindy said and what Stan said. I think there's, we badly need to restructure the staffing at the senior centers. Cindy's making a great start, and after her explanation, I don't really see anything I could add. Hope you'll support it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. Councilor Peak?
Thank you, Mr. President. If there's nothing else, I will make a motion to amend city ordinance, Chapter 7, Section 7-17A, to add the position of Council on Aging Program Manager at grade D.
We have a motion and a second to amend the city ordinance, Chapter 7, Section 717. Any further discussion? Councilor Rist?
I just wanted to say thank you to the mayor and to the director of COA for putting this forward. Anything we can do to help our seniors is sorely needed, and helping with the staffing at the Community Council on Aging Center is just wonderful, so thank you.
Thank you, councilor. Any other councilor? Seeing none. Barbara?
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zerret.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Motion passes. I will take a motion to close public hearing.
Move that we close the public hearing.
Seeing none. We have a motion and a second to close public hearing. Barbara?
Let's see. Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zerret.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Motion passes. We end up with ordinance report. Property, would it have any, any report from property? Would it have any next meeting rules? Councilor Rist?
Yes, I wanted to alert the council that I aired in my original request for the change in the vacancy language under 39 of our charter. I forgot that we have a midterm election on a four-year term. Also, I looked into, thank you, Barbara, for sending me a couple of other communities' language. It is interesting that the same section numbers are used in North Hampton's language, so I am adopting, adapting that to fit our needs and will debate it at rules. I will submit a new 39 amendment to the, to the charter for our next meeting, simply to put forward what should have been put forward originally. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes.
Thank you. Councilor Rist? New business. Councilor Rist?
Do we need to approve the warrant?
Yes.
I move that we approve the warrant for the November 8 state election, as submitted by the clerk. Second?
We have a motion and a second to accept the warrant for November 8 state elections. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Owen Zerret.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
And Dan Rist.
Aye.
Motion passes. Councilor Rist?
We have before us a motion. The motion's been changed by our auditor to remove any borrowing language, and it was approved by the park grant officials. So, I, the motion I will state this evening is pretty close to what was sent out in the packet by the Park and Rec Director, but it just removes the language for borrowing. We need to do this, authorize for a future appropriation of the entire amount for the project to satisfy the park grant people that they are, that we are indeed going to fund the entire project. So, without further ado, I move that the city council vote to authorize the appropriation of $1,203,500 to pay for the Nonotuck Park Pool upgrades on a portion of land known as Nonotuck Park, to be managed and controlled by the City Parks and Recreation Department in accordance with Chapter 45, Section 3, for active recreation purposes. And to meet said appropriation, a treasurer with the approval of the mayor or designee is authorized to fund $1,203,500 to pay the cost of the project using available city funding sources, and that the mayor or their designee be authorized to file on behalf of the city of East Hampton any and all applications deemed necessary under the park grant, and the mayor or their designee be authorized to enter into all agreements and execute any and all instruments, including the conveyance of perpetual conservation restriction in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 184, as required by Section 12A of Chapter 44B, or Chapter 293, Section 10 of the Acts of 1998, as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the needs of the council vote for the park grant appropriation for Nonotuck Park Pool upgrades. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zerret.
Aye.
Motion passes. Look like we did everything in our agenda. We'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Barbara?
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zerret.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Motion passes. You guys?
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.